... absent.
Thank you. Can we please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to do things in a little bit different order before we approve the agenda. So can I have a motion to move into closed session to discuss pending litigation of Spencer versus Canton?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board go into closed session for the purposes of discussing pending litigation, Spencer v. Canton.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist. Okay, sorry. Clerk Segrist, please take roll call.
Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
We will be right back after closed session. Motion by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is to the adoption of the agenda. Basically, what we're going to do here is we're going to add to the agenda, adding a resolution to recognize the cultural festival of Diwali in celebration of the festival of lights. We're also going to add item of presentation for the redevelopment readiness communities presentation certification. And we're going to add item G six, which is consider authorization of permit for private fireworks display at the hamlet to celebrate Diwali.
So moved.
Port.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes. The next item is the approval of minutes on October 12th, 2021.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board approve the minutes from the meeting held October 12th, 2021.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Motion passes. The next item is public comment. So we're now at the portion of our meeting designated for public comment. So anyone who wishes to address the board is invited to at this time. We appreciate that individuals please identify themselves by name and community of residence while limiting their comments to three minutes. This is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the board about their views and provide input for us to take into the decision-making process. It's not a time for question and answers. If you seek information about the administration of the township government or are looking for a response, please follow up with the township staff on particular issues, either after the meeting or in the morning, when we can have more information from you. So we will have a timer up there to help everybody see the time at three minutes. So why don't we start in the front row? Does anyone like to make public comment in the front row? Okay, go ahead. Please. Okay, anyone else? If you would like to make public comment, please go up to the podium. Sir? No? No? Okay. Second row? No? Nope. Sir? You okay? Please go to the podium, state your name, please, and...
We might mask on, so I was speaking.
You don't have to know, that's okay, as long as you're over there. And please identify yourself by name and community of residence.
Hello? Am I audible? Hello and namaste to respected board members. I am Nayan Patel and proud Canton Township resident. I wore the same dress during the Detroit Free Press Half Marathon that I ran on Sunday, October 17th, about eight, nine days back. One can see that on their website, I am in the same dress up right now. And this write-up, it says Vasudhaya Kutumbakam. It simply means that entire earth is my family. It's a universal brotherhood concept. What a wonderful and noble Vedic understanding. This is what I strive to achieve as a Hindu. And these four flags, these are from the different country where I lived so far: India, Australia, Canada, and now US for last more than a decade here. It has a dive... And we are about 10 years here. Canton has a diverse community and very large Hindu population, where my family can enjoy cultural association with others. As a Hindu, I respect and accept other people's cultural practices. While running the half marathon, I interacted with fellow runners carrying flags, took some pictures and videos to share with my family and friend. So let me share a couple of pictures that while I was running marathon, I was open for other people and have my memories with me. So such a cultural interactions allow me to grow as a true human being. We Hindus live in a peace and harmony with others regardless of which country we are in. When I saw the video of some speaker came here and sprayed hatred against Hindus from this podium, I got disturbed. These people are telling lies about Hinduism and creating a false perception. I do not know where these people are from. I do not know if they understand Hinduism and have ever interacted with any Hindus. Canton Township has a large Hindu population. Was this been your experience? Just like me, many of my Hindu friends are in total shock that someone would spread such hatred and false narrative to put our families at unnecessary risk. I understand freedom of speech, but how can someone use Canton Township platform for such a political speech to spread hatred for an entire community? One more thing: India is the largest democracy in the world, and every election happens under sovereign constitution of the country.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Thank you. Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Yeah, just the same. We have no reason to interfere with their government.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Sorry. We have to stick to the three minutes to be fair for everybody. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else in the third, second row? Anyone in the third row? No? Sure, go ahead to the podium, please. Please state your name and your community of residence. Thank you.
Well, good evening, board members. My full name is Jnana Desikin Ramanajam. I go by one name, Ram, as though I'm Madonna or Prince. It's a lot easier. I live in Hampton Ridge North in Canton, and I've been a proud homeowner for more than 20 years. I moved here in the 1990s because this is a great community, a diverse community. I came here just to present some facts. I too watched the video, you know, that the other gentleman was referring to, and I thought, let me just make it a little clear what it is. Number one, Hinduism definitely is all-encompassing, but I want to go specifically because the charge was against a couple of organizations, one being the HSS. I'm not a member of HSS or RSS. But just to make it clear, what the Prime Minister of India is doing is to ensure that it is truly a secular country whereby everybody gets the same rights and nobody gets any less. What had happened, apparently, was that some folks misunderstood the secularism to mean that certain groups should be treated more favorably. And in the process, what was happening is that the rights of the Hindus in their own homeland was not being recognized. And what the Prime Minister did was to make sure that everyone is brought up to the same thing. I'll just give the hypothetical equivalent situation if it had happened here and the action that was taken. It would be tantamount to the Hindus and/or the Muslims or other communities in Canton being allowed to have their own civil code instead of following the civil code of the United States and Canton. We should all have the same code. It should be the same law. That was one of the things that the Prime Minister did. It would be tantamount to discouraging Christians in Canton from displaying or celebrating Christmas while minority communities like Hindus would be allowed to celebrate Diwali or Muslims would be allowed to celebrate Eid. That would not be fair. All the Prime Minister did was to make sure that Hindus can celebrate their function just as others can. So this is basically equalizing everything. The last point I want to make is that actually about 50% of the Muslim population in India is extremely happy with the Prime Minister because he gave equality to the women of the Muslim faith there. So having said that, there's three seconds left. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ram. Thank you. Anyone else in that row? Okay, sir, please go to the podium.
Good evening, Supervisor and Board of Trustees members. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. I am more than three decades resident of Michigan. I am also a resident of Okmes, Lansing suburb here. I sat on the other side. I also served on the Board of Trustees for Oakland University and chaired many organizations. I was chair for Michigan Public Educational Facilities Authority and chaired, chartered member of Michigan Health Information Technology Commission and Governor's Advisory Council on Asia-Pacific Affairs also. I was disturbed at the video that was seen. I was there in... I call my second home is Troy. I've been working there for more than 20 years. I have served in the Board of Troy Community Foundation even today, and we serve the community. I was disturbed by the video. They spoke in the Troy, and then I went to Troy, and then they came next day here. And also, they went to another temple of worship. I don't want to tell which faith it is and spew venom there to create hatred and division. I wanted to tell you about Hinduism. I came more than 30 years back for the country it stands, freedom and liberty here, and we respect for the rule of law, our Constitution and Bill of Rights. Hinduism is one of the oldest culture and tradition in the world. It is 6,000 years older than Judaism also, next oldest. But still, you don't see many more than India. We don't believe in propagating or converting people, and it has withstood the Moghul invasion. It has withstood the British occupation. And some of the people who belong to the other religion in India are because of this Moghuls coming over or British coming over, they have changed their thing. Hinduism is not a religion, it's a way of life. There are a lot of things that are based on nature. And we respect everybody, including nature, animals. As you know, some people tease us also. We worship cows and others, you know, because we are grateful to cows because we drink milk, you know, so we need to be very thankful. That's the kind of heart we have. And we don't spew hatred against anybody and anywhere or any religion, you know. I studied right from kindergarten in Jesuit schools, and my dad has built a block for a Jesuit school, so we don't have this animosity there. And what I personally and others also is happening is now either forcible conversion or by inducement, we don't like it. And I just wanted to assure you, you have seen in Michigan, there are so many Hindus living here. Have you seen any violent activity from any Hindu person or group? And as far as RSS is concerned, I'm not an active member or anything. I have been to some of their events. It is called Rashya Seva Sangha in India. Seva means service organization. It is not based on one particular religion or anything.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next in that row? Okay, please go to the podium. State your name and your city of residence.
Namaskar. Good evening, respected Madam Supervisor and board members. My name is Parimal Bhatt, and I live in Canton community since 96. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak in front of this respected body and the residents of Canton Township. First, I want to offer my condolences to all the families who lost their loved ones in Taliban takeover in Afghanistan. My heart goes out especially to the families of the brave US soldiers who lost their lives in yet another bomb blast while evacuating. This carnage has disturbed me deeply. So when I saw a group of some Indian-American speakers come to the board on October 12th, I was hopefully excited that someone would share these feelings of mine with a larger community. Instead, what I heard shocked me. I have never, ever seen such vile hatred being spouted out at any public meeting like this. Speaker after speaker spoke of their hatred for Hindu organizations, Hindu leaders, and the Hindu community. One gentleman who talked about his role in establishing a parochial school, I think he was talking about Islamic parochial school in Canton, he accused the entire Hindu community of being complacent in supporting some radical organizations. Really? Such religious xenophobic attitudes are not acceptable in our community and certainly not in our public forums. As you may know, Hinduism is the oldest spiritual knowledge system. We call it a dharma. It has many diverse traditions, philosophical ideas, ways of worshiping, and numerous rituals. All its teachings are meant to help us grow spiritually. However, in this civil society, we call the United States of America, we all follow the Constitution. This book clearly allows me to have my own ideology and my way of worshiping so long as I do not hurt anyone. If we start persecuting people and groups based on the ideologies as was suggested, I can assure you, Hinduism and its sister dharmas would stand last on the list. Why? Because our aspiration is Sarvetra Sukhina Santu. We pray and worship for the happiness of all beings. We don't just believe, but we know that the other is not the other, but my divine brother. We are the seekers, and we are constantly searching for the spark of divinity in all the divine creations. Today, I respectfully urge the board to draft and pass a resolution condemning the vile speeches made on October 12th, 2021, and all such hateful, hate-filled speeches and behaviors that puts our community at risk.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Next row? Not the back row yet. The fourth row there. Nobody in the fourth row? No? Okay, the last row? Okay, Mr. Miller?
George Miller, Canton. I'd like to address a few things right off the bat. We used to have a five-minute talk here, the general public. I'd like to know how it come about for three minutes. I'd like to know the protocol. I'd like a copy of it or the rules. Okay? And I hope it'll be... These builders come in, and some of these developers and businesses come in, and I watch them here, and they have... They talk for 10 or 15 minutes. So we should be... Have the same privilege. I'd like to know how the three minutes come about. Like I said, the rules and the protocol on that. Okay. Couple issues. Got a letter from you guys here at the township? I'd like to know about the excavator. It has a 25-foot reach, most of them do. I was out at Beck Road in Gettys today. They were... The water department or sewer department was out there making water taps. They had it out there. I can get in the surveyor's plot, and I can bet money without even looking at it, those sewer lines are now of 10 foot. So why do we need a 25-foot machine? What's the use for it? To justify it? I like that. You have it here because it was voted on anonymously. Well, we know that. We were here. Also, I'd like to know on the theater out there, evidently the township owns it. I'd like to know if it's making enough revenue, being rented and ticket sales, people renting it for shows and so forth, if it's breaking even, even? If it's supporting itself instead of taking it out of the tax fund here possibly or the general fund? Okay. I'd like to know how... What we can do about Sheldon Road. I noticed here, there was a sidewalk going through the river, poured a couple of years ago. Usually grade is up with... Even with the road. I want to know why that sidewalk is flooded and it's two foot below grade, generally speaking, just looking at it. And maybe we can get the ditches cleaned over here around Sheldon Road. The ditches had drained nowhere for years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the last row? Okay, go on. State your name and place of residence, please.
Hello, board. Thanks for the opportunity in providing this platform for us to talk. My name is Haritha Wadari. I'm from the Lexington Square neighborhood, just down the street. I'm here representing two entities. I'm speaking on behalf of a board member of HRCRC, which is the Hindu Council Community Relations Council of Michigan, a newly formed grassroots organization, speaking on behalf of the Hindu community of the state, but more importantly, as a longstanding resident of the Canton community. I've grown up here. I've attended public school here, and I share a great love for this community and mainly for its diversity and inclusivity. I appreciate the motion that you passed for Diwali and the celebrations that happened last week. So seeing the remarks made in the meetings on October 12th has pained me as well as the community at large of the Hindu community. And just here to air some concerns and the concerns about how individuals from outside of the community, outside of the state, have been able to come here to spread some misinformation without any... Knowing what their intent was, where they are being funded from, and you know, they're not from the Canton community, and they're not representing the community. And our concerns as the Hindu community of Canton, just Canton, not the state of Michigan, is that Hindu phobia is on the rise all over the world. There are a lot of attacks happening on the other side of the world. So as a community, we are concerned for our safety and our livelihood, especially us as a community being such a significant part of the Canton community with multiple houses of worship and many, you know, professionals and families and multiple generations living here. And as the HRCRC, we have also shared a letter with the board the moment this meeting was televised on October 12th, and we would always appreciate a conversation to see how we can better advocate for the Hindu community on behalf of HRCRC and on behalf as a Canton citizen for over 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the last row? Did I miss anybody? Do we have anyone online, Clerk Segrist, that would like to make public comment?
Hold me a moment. I gotta find... Okay. This is typically done on my own computer screen, but we've got a new process today, and I wasn't at the training, so shame on me. I get to learn in front of everybody. I see nobody in the audience. Okay. With their hand raised, do you want to ask anybody in the audience if they want to raise their hand, if they'd like to speak? If you're on an iPhone, you can do that by hitting star nine. If you're on Zoom, you have the ability to do that by going to the microphone in the bottom-left corner of your Zoom screen.
Anyone online want to make public comment? Please raise your hand. Any public comment? Public comment?
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the payment of bills. Can I have a motion to pay the bills, please?
Madam Supervisor, I make the motion to pay the bills. Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next item is to read the resolution for... To recognize the cultural festival of Diwali in celebration of the festival of lights, read by trustee Tanya Ganguly.
Resolution to recognize the cultural festival of Diwali and celebrate Diwali, the festival of lights in Canton Township. Whereas Diwali or Diwali is celebrated in autumn of each year by Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and others throughout the United States and around the world. Whereas Diwali is observed among more than a billion people from a variety of faiths across India and its diaspora, the five days of Diwali are marked by feasts, fireworks, family gatherings, and charitable giving. Whereas Diwali is celebrated by lighting the dia or oil lamp, which symbolizes dispelling darkness and bringing light into life with traditional offering, rituals, and festivals. Whereas celebrants of Diwali believe that the rows of lamps symbolize the light within the individual that rids a person of ignorance, that rids a person of ignorance, and is celebration of good, triumphing over evil, and light prevailing over darkness. And whereas Canton Township remains resolute in its commitment to continue fostering diversity of cultural experience and its goal of creating welcoming communities, and Diwali is a time marked by qualities of togetherness, family, and community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Chartered Township of Canton recognize the cultural festival of Diwali and express respect and to all those who celebrate the festival of Diwali throughout the world and in our own community and celebrate Diwali in Canton Township. We encourage our residents, employees, and the larger community to join us in this special cultural celebration and the peace and prosperity that it signifies.
Port.
Thank you. All those in favor of reading this into record and accepting it to record, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, great. This is into the record. We also have copies of this in the back. Treasurer Slavens said that she made copies for everybody if you want to get it in the back. We... Next item on the agenda is a presentation, Our Feet in the Street Final Report from our recycling efforts, given by Director Jade Smith.
Good evening. If I can be able to share my screen, that would be wonderful.
Boy, here we go.
I think you have to give me permission to share.
Up here or in the back? There we go.
Try if you can now.
Right. Thank you very much. So as you all know, we... Excuse me. Did participate in a Feet on the Street Recycling Education Campaign and Data Collection Campaign over the summer, and we... It was about... It was for eight weeks. We received a grant from $85,000 from Eagle, and it was managed by the Recycling Partnership and Canton Township employees. Hats off to Amy Hamilton, who works in MSD as part of our communications team. She did a wonderful job taking the lead on this. It was coordinated, obviously, by ourselves with our own employees, and then Lead Point USA brought in some part-time temporary employees to actually do the inspections of the actual recycle bins throughout the community for those eight weeks. Before the program started, they did do some baseline statistics and found that Canton Township had a 20% contamination rate of all of our recycling and that our value of our recycling was about $170 per ton for all our recycled goods. And the unknown part was the participation rate. So those were the three biggest targets that we needed to find out throughout the course of the eight weeks, and then I'll talk to... I'll talk to what we can do with the statistics, the final results, towards the end of the presentation. This are some... These are some of our favorite pictures of the eight weeks, what we found in recycling bins. The top one on the right is by far the one that shocked us the most, that is absolutely chicken wings and carrots in a foil container that was just set in the recycling bin as you see it. We have tires and wheels, speakers, furniture, old lawn equipment. So it was clear that there are people that are just using this bin for trash and not just recycling, or don't know truly what they can recycle. So some of the post-program statistics. As I mentioned, our contamination rate was 20% when we started. That did drop to 14.5. We increased our market value to 174... We increased our market value to $174. They did determine, our participation rate went up. Our set-out rate was determined to be 56%. And I'm going to go through all these statistics a little more details in the next slides. We did issue 9,077 warnings for people that did contaminate their recycling bins. And then of those 9,000, 1,961 recycled bins were rejected throughout the course of the eight weeks. So that averaged out to about 200 per week that were rejected. And I guess just to note, those 1,961 that were rejected, it's not that they were rejected forever, we are picking up the recycling. Again, it was just during that eight-week period. I know that was a big concern of some of the residents. So in regards to the contamination rate, in July, we had, I mentioned that it was 20% and that did drop 28% to 14.53. The top three contaminations, contaminants were identified and those included plastic bags and wrap, food or liquid, and then bagged recyclables. So pretty predictable as to what we thought we would find as the, the most, the biggest contaminants. And that's where we can actually focus some of our education on moving forward. Participation rate was at 77%. And although we didn't have this rate that we could, we could tell from the beginning of the, of the program, the national average is 72. So working with the, with Eagle and with the professionals that were helping us put this program on, they were very happy with that, that, that participation rate. Market value, although we don't see any of this revenue, the value of our recyclables, because it was cleaner recyclables, did go up from $169 per ton to $174 per ton. So that does speak in another way that you can see how, how clean and how, how pure your recycling is. The set-out rate, the set-out rate is also, was not, we did not know that number before the program. And our average was 56% as a set-out rate for the whole community. And the interesting thing about set-out rates is there is no national average on this because there's a lot of variables that go into it from, if your community recycles from once a week or biweekly, if they have the small 34-gallon containers or the 64-gallon containers or the 96-gallon containers. So there's a lot of variables that go in with what the set-out rate is. So they did do a comparison of a community that actually has the same size cart we did, which was Auburn Hills, and their set-out rate was 41% compared to our 56%. So if you look at a comparable community within the state of Michigan with the same size cart, we did exceed that, that percentage. Probably could still do better. This slide right here is, is great because this, this very rarely happens with, with grant dollars, but we did not actually expend the entire grant dollars, nor do we go into the commitment that the township, the township already had allocated dollars within the budget to cover postage and printing. We didn't have to go into the budget for additional dollars. We accounted our existing budget towards our contribution to the grant and we actually came in under budget. So what do we do now? I think it's pretty clear that there's still some more education that's needed. The high petition ration rate shows we have a community that wants to recycle. There's just a lot of confusion out there, so we need to do a better job of educating the public. And how are we going to do that? We did take, there's a phase two to this, to this grant, which is also funded through Eagle and it's called the App to Action Grant. And it's, like I said, it's phase two. And we did apply for that and now we have received, we got notification a week and a half ago that we received $28,241 to continue on with our education and outreach programs. So although I didn't go into a lot of the detail of the areas of the township with the data, it's because we don't have it. And you had to go for phase two in order to receive the complete book of data that breaks it down by the different areas of the township. And we can really take that data, look at it and see where do we have to do some more educational outreach and, and reach out to our residents to get them to recycle cleaner. So once we've, we've got that award letter, once we get that data and take a look at where we need to concentrate on, they also have resources for us to use to actually communicate with our residents, both online, direct mail, and then obviously we can attend events, maybe homeowners associations, those types of things. So we'll put together a whole education campaign with $28,000 to go out and continue the education over the course of the next. This will start in the spring of 22, 2022, and we can continue that throughout the summer as well. Some of the other things to think about and some of the challenges that we have is, you know, some of the pictures you saw showed people were overstuffing the recycling bins, which some of it was trash. And we, once we reduce and remove that out of there, we should have room in the, in the recycling bins. But one of the comments that we got back a lot was in regards to garbage cans, that our, we should be supplying our residents with garbage cans. And would that help fray some of the contamination from recycling and having people put it actually in the township-issued garbage bins? That's something we can probably have some further discussion on when it comes time to go out to bid for our next trash contract, which is in 2025. And then what do we do about people who refuse to comply? That's, that's going to always be a challenge. I don't know that there's a solution for that. We're not planning on going door-to-door like we did for the, these last eight weeks, but that is going to always be a challenge that we have with recycling. And so the education efforts we have and that we put out there and how we target them and what areas of the township we target them are going to be key. So that was really brief. I just wanted to just briefly go over that and I can send everybody this presentation as well and know that there's more to come when we do phase two. But I'm open up for any questions or discussion.
Questions, but Diane?
Just a quick comment. That's great to see just in eight weeks what you were able to do. So I'm very excited about phase two. I think educating our residents so that they know what they can put in is a great idea. So thank you so much.
And that's pretty non-invasive because there's nobody walking the streets, peeking in anyone's cans. This is going to be direct, you know, we'll do some, whatever is most effective is what we'll do to accomplish that education.
Bina, do you know that your hand is raised? Did you have a question? Bina, can you hear me? Oh, she might not, okay. Anyone else on the Board, any questions?
I wonder if, I wonder if because my computer is muted.
Can Bina hear me? She should be able to hear me right.
She's speaking.
It should be, it should allow her to speak if you give her permission. If she could.
Yes, permission, which is why you can see the red microphone. Now she's unmuted herself.
Okay.
Right now, because it's moving up and down, but there's no audio coming. If I unmute, Bina?
Can you hear us, Bina?
I didn't solve it either.
Maybe she could type her comments.
I don't know if there's, if chat has been disabled.
Oh.
Because that is one area where the public tends to engage in a little bit of mischief when they.
Correct. Right.
Ill intent. Bina, we apologize.
Does your volume have to be on, on your computer?
So I just turned it on and then she spoke and there was no change. So that's going to be one thing to think about with regard to the new setup.
Anyone else comments on this? Tanya?
I have a quick question. I have a quick question. What is the, what does the set-out rate mean first?
So the set-out rate is the number of times that someone sets their, the, the rate of the set-out. So basically 56% of our community recycles.
Okay.
They set their, they set their containers out. And again, there's a lot of variables with that because you have to look at the size of the container we have. And if you have a large family, they may be 100% setting it out every single week. Where if you have just a couple that lives there, they may set out every two weeks. So they may skip a week. So set-out rate is very, it, it's a hard number to actually say what's good and what's bad because it's all very dependent on the household.
And there was another percentage that you showed, that was 78% or?
27 at the top?
Yeah, so, so what is the difference between that and the 56%? You said.
So the, the set-out rate is on a weekly basis. The participat, participation rate, excuse me, is, shows that a household sets out their container at least once a month.
Okay.
So how many active households do we have within the community?
Okay.
So although you may have 77% that are participating once a month, not everybody sets out their cans every single week.
I have a quick question for the future recycling. So I was, I was asked by a few residents by email or phone calls that can we have, rather than us taking our styrofoam containers to a different township or a city and pay a fee there, can we have, can Canton Township set up a, you know, near their, wherever they're, they're doing their waste, recycling and other things, can they set up a big, you know, bin or a big container where people can come and deposit their styrofoam containers and can they do the recycling? Is that something that you're thinking about in the future?
Yes, we've talked about that with, with Public Works. I think we've talked about it with a few of the Board members as well. And that's just something that takes some time to set up because what do you do? You have to find an end user for that styrofoam and styrofoam's not as easy to get rid of as the other recyclables are because they don't take styrofoam at the MRF where our single-stream recycling goes.
Anyone else? And as residents and users of, you know, packaging too, you can definitely write whomever, you know, whatever store is sending you styrofoam, you know, ask them to change. Or when you go into restaurants and they use styrofoam, you can ask them to change too, you know, or encourage them.
Yeah, there are some facilities in like, in the metro Detroit area where people take their styrofoam containers. So some people ask me, rather than going to these other, other cities like, and paying a fee, can Canton do this for us and set up a big container where we can go and deposit the styrofoam if we have them in our house? And can that be taken care of? Something to consider in the future.
Yes, definitely. Jade, do you know if there, is there a market anywhere for styrofoam or do they?
There is, there is some, there, there is some, yes. I don't, I don't know any off the top of my head, but I know that when we did some initial research, there are some users out there. And there are some in Michigan.
Okay, then Kate?
I just wanted to echo Diane's remarks and thank you for, for the program and for the information about it. And request that once phase two is done, that we also get the data for that as well because I think that will be really interesting.
Right, yes.
All right, thanks Jade.
You're welcome.
The next presentation is Redevelopment Readiness Communities Certification Presentation.
You can promote Elizabeth King as, to a panelist, that would be wonderful. And hopefully she'll be able to, hopefully we'll be able to hear her.
Can you hear us, Elizabeth? Looks like we're having the same issue. You can hear us, right? Can you give thumbs up? Okay, thank you. So we're having an issue with hearing people.
Trevor's on his way down to.
Okay.
Elizabeth, do you want to try speaking now?
I can hear you a little now.
I can hear something.
Very light.
Maybe someone needs to turn the volume up on something?
I'm turning mine up, we're going to figure out a way to do this.
So I had switched it to the speakers, Canton Boardroom, as opposed to Creston, but I switched it back. Can you speak again?
Can you hear me now?
Well, certainly can. Now if there's, if there's an audio.
So quiet. Oops, now the echo. Can you hear?
One moment. Let me turn my. Now try.
Want to try again, Elizabeth?
Okay, can you hear me?
Can. Is there a way to turn her up a little bit or that's the maximum?
I think you have to turn it up on the Creston if you want to turn the volume up. Only there's also a way, I'm being told. One moment.
So for now.
Hey, want to turn the audi, the sound off on your computer, Greg?
Did he have that one on?
How about now?
Try that now.
How do you sound now?
Okay, Elizabeth, can you speak again, please?
Yep, testing.
Good.
Will that be picked up on the audio, Trevor, for the video? Do we, we can try it, this volume. Okay, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay, thank you guys so much. So hello, everyone, it's nice to see you this evening. My name is Elizabeth King. I work at the Michigan Economic Development Corporation as Senior Redevelopment Ready Communities Planner for Wayne, Oakland, and McComb Counties. Thank you for allowing me this time to give you an update on the RRC program and Canton's participation and status as an engaged redevelopment-ready community. Canton came into the RRC program in June 2021 and I completed the city's baseline report in October 2021. In this presentation, I'm going to give you an overview of economic development at the MEDC, the RRC program, the RRC best practices that Canton is meeting, and what still needs to be done to achieve RRC certification. Before we dive too deep into RRC, let's start with an overview of what economic development is and what we do at the MEDC. There's no one right way to define economic development, but most definitions focus on concepts like improving quality of life, access to good jobs, and leverage private investment. You may be wondering, how does Michigan address economic development as a state? Well, we at the MEDC do this through partnerships between 40-plus local economic development organizations to collaborate at the state level and collectively work to create statewide prosperity. The MEDC works with numerous local, state, and federal partners to leverage existing tools while administering several MEDC-specific programs. Internally, the MEDC is comprised of three main divisions. We have marketing and communications, which you may be familiar with because of their work on Pure Michigan, on the Pure Michigan marketing campaign. The Pure Michigan brand is used to market Michigan's assets to attract visitors, workers, residents, and business investment. The Business Development Division, which you may have some experience with, is primarily focused on business retention, expansion, and attraction efforts across the state. The Community Development Division, in which the RRC program is housed, works with local governments and stakeholders to support the creation of vibrant, diverse, and resilient communities. Our community development tools focus primarily on traditional downtown revitalization. But in Canton, our tools would be targeted toward your Cherry Hill District, where you're planning for and working to build business and residential density as well as walkability. There are several teams within the Community Development Division dedicated to helping municipalities and business stakeholders access our tools. The Community Assistance Team is often a community's first point of contact for accessing community development resources. The Community Assistance Team helps with determining the best financial tools for a real estate development project, working with both large and small business owners and developers to package and secure project funding approvals, as well as connecting the community with technical assistance resources and answering general questions. The business, the Small Business Services Team is a municipality's point of contact for programs such as Match On Main, Community Capital, E Corporation Information. for programs such as Match On Main, Community Capital, E-Corporation Information, General Training, and more. The Small Business Team works directly with both businesses and communities across the state. And the Redevelopment Ready Communities Team is comprised of RRC planners who focus on supporting communities and meeting the best practices and working through the RRC process from engagement to certification and beyond. Oops, wrong side. There we go. Overall, economic development in Michigan is driven by a simple concept, place talent business. Each component is necessary to support the other and no strategy, state or local, is complete without all three. Talent wants place. More and more talented people are choosing where to live first, whether it be their hometown, a family vacation spot, or a remote place by the lake, or a new and exciting community. Technology has made it easier to find the place that feels right first and build a career from there. Places need business. Where people, where there are people, there exist demands for goods and services and jobs. No place can be vibrant without businesses and oftentimes businesses are near the top of the list for reasons why someone may love their town. Businesses need talent, as you know, to be successful. Without talent, it's impossible to innovate, create, or deliver services. Businesses will relocate to where talent already is if there's enough critical mass. This is why we're working to develop vibrant and business-friendly places so communities and businesses can be sustainable and attract talent. Now that I've given you a brief overview of the MEDC's Community Development Division, let's dive a little bit deeper into what the RRC program is and the RRC best practices. RRC is a voluntary technical assistance program available to any community throughout Michigan. RRC helps communities build a strong foundation for community division economic development through planning, zoning, training, marketing, and more. Think of RRC as an urban planning roadmap to help create vibrant places that are set up for economic success. The goal of the, the goals of the RRC program are to help communities in streamlining internal processes, cutting red tape, and increasing transparency in order to meet RRC best practices and become more vibrant and customer-friendly. However, this is a continuous process and there's more work that needs to be done. The RRC attitude is let's find a way to make this happen instead of the old style of we can't do that thinking. There are over 300 communities across the state participating in the RRC program and 59 certified communities, and over 50 communities in Wayne, Oakland, and McComb. So you're not alone in this program, you have partners. The program is based on six guiding principles. It's community-driven. This means that you're all invited to the table to shape the present and the future of Canton. The community's vision and goals are at the heart of everything, defining how it plans, what actions it prioritizes, and how its zoning code looks, and more. Predictability. RRC strives to help communities build predictable development experiences. When applicants can easily find and comprehend development standards and expectations, they'll be more likely to invest in the community now and in the future. It's implementable. This principle applies to both how a community approaches planning and how RRC seeks to integrate best practices locally. Plans that sit on shelves collecting dust are of little use to anyone. So focusing on specific actions and implementation goals gets, and implementation gets communities closer to their goals. Redevelopment ready communities are proactive. They understand that communities and businesses operate in a highly competitive world and that being proactive helps secure opportunities that might not otherwise work. Equity is at the heart of the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. We all win when our friends, family, neighbors, and communities thrive. Integrating RRC best practices into local processes can make it easier for smaller local investors, creating more prosperous communities which benefit us all. And finally, collaboration. Community and economic development are team sports and redevelopment-ready communities capture momentum to collaborate with both traditional and non-traditional partners, ranging from local businesses and schools to nonprofit foundations and community organizations. Now that you've had a high-level overview of the RRC program, let's zoom into the RRC best practices. The program focuses on six best practices as identified by public and private industry stakeholders. We help communities focus their reform efforts in planning and public engagement, zoning, streamlining the development review processes, boards and commissions recruitment, training, recruitment and training, economic development, and marketing planning, and promoting sites for redevelopment. Best practice one focuses on a community's planning and how a vision for the future and redevelopment is embedded within municipal planning documents, which include at a minimum a master plan, capital improvements plan, downtown plan, or corridor plan, and the focus on implementation and having actionable plans. This best practice will also help the community build a cohesive public participation plan, bringing the community together around a common vision and the development that comes along with that vision. Best practice two focuses on zoning regulations and reform and how well those regulations support the goals of the master plan. Zoning is a key tool for implementation and should be used to shape inviting walkable, vibrant communities. In this best practice, we look at not only creating walkable districts, but also integrating housing diversity, parking flexibility, green infrastructure, and user-friendliness. Every zoning ordinance is different, but the best practice is fit no matter the existing structure. Best practice three focuses on streamlining a community's development review policies and procedures and how the community is communicating both internally and to external customers. The purpose of the development review process is to ensure plans for specific types of development comply with local ordinances and are consistent with the master plan, but also doubles as an external-facing service that can leave a positive lasting impression on those who invest in the community. Unnecessary steps or unclear instructions increase time and expense associated with development. Bigger developers often have the capital available to lay out a complicated drawn-out process, but entrepreneurs, small businesses, and the average resident looking to complete a project do not. To drive equitable community-based development, a smooth and predictable streamlined process is essential. These processes should be timely and clearly communicated, making all information on the development review process and resources available. Assist applicants of all experience levels in understanding what they will need to do, know as they invest in your community. Trusting your ordinances to get the township the development you want and your staff's decisions to work out problems and help applicants through the development process is key. Best practice four focuses on broker and orientation for appointed and elected officials and board members. This best practice also helps ensure boards have strong meeting procedures, a strategic approach to training, and enhanced communications between boards through annual reports and joint meetings. As a part of this best practice, we'll be asking you to work with your staff to create a training strategy and outline what you'll want to learn in your role over the next year or two. Continuing education and training is an important planning and zoning risk management strategy for local governments in Michigan. And last, but not least, this best practice asks communities to clearly document board and commission's appointment process. Finding volunteers for municipal boards and commissions is hard enough, but it can be a little easier when applicants know what the process will look like upfront and know what to expect. Best practice five encourages communities to establish goals and actions that can be taken to strengthen overall economic health and how the community promotes and markets itself to create community pride and establish an image. This best practice also encourages communities to identify local incentives, incentive tools, and policies to support new development. This will involve looking at your master plan to determine what your community's goals are and what sort of incentives you want to offer to reach those goals. Any project your community works with, works with the ME, works on with the MEDC and asks for state incentives for will require some sort of local match. This could come in the form of fee waivers, tax abatements, infrastructure investments, and more. But you will need to have these conversations ahead of time and establish transparent policies and applications around your local incentives. This can help avoid any accusations of impropriety and puts everyone on equal footing. This best practice also creates an opportunity for communities to leverage existing partnerships and forge new collaborations. In this best practice, you'll develop your visual image and messaging outlining how Canton wants to talk about and promote itself. This best practice is, is about telling your own story in order to market yourself to residents, new businesses, investors, and more. Here we see Canton's evaluation snapshot. We use a green-yellow-red system for easy visual communication. Green means your community is fully meeting the best practice expectations. Yellow means the community has some of the best, has met some of the best practice expectations or has projects in process, but is not yet fully meeting the expectation. And red indicates that the best practice expectations are missing. Canton is meeting and has completed 37% of the RRC best practice expectations and it's on its way to meeting another 50% of the best practices. Canton is only fully missing 13% of the RRC best practices. So let's talk about the best practices Canton is fully meeting. The township is planning for a walkable area of concentrated development in the Cherry Hill District through a sub-area plan in the master plan and implemented through the overlay district and design guidelines. These same design guidelines and overlay district help the township meet the conceptual, the concentrated development zoning best practice, which requires communities to allow mixed-use buildings by right and includes placemaking provisions in the ordinance, of which Canton allows outdoor dining, requires front-facing doorways, and parking located in the rear of the buildings. The township is also meeting the zoning best practices for parking flexibility through shared parking agreements, a reduction in required parking for complimentary mixed-use uses, parking maximums, and encouraging connections between parking lots. Canton is also meeting a variety of development review best practices, including a clearly-defined development review process, an easily identified point of contact on the city website, an updated fee schedule, and a planning and zoning website that serves as a guide to development. And the township uses CityView to track projects internally and externally, allowing applicants to see the status of their projects. Canton is also fully meeting the boards and commissions certified best practices in the areas of communication through the uses of, through the use of planning commission annual reports and joint board and commission meetings. Now let's take a closer look at the yellow partially-aligned best practices. For plans in public engagement, the township will need to update the master plan to align with RRC best practices and will need to create a comprehensive capital improvements plan annually and will need to finish developing a public participation plan to help guide community engagement in the future and while updating the master plan. The township will also need to update the zoning ordinance to align with the implementation of the master plan and allow for more diverse traditional housing types by right. Township staff has already been working to make the zoning ordinance more user-friendly by creating a land use symbol so people can easily understand what can be built where added lands. When it comes to the development review process, a bit of work needs to be done. The township will need to advertise and clearly define conceptual review meetings on the website and also update the website to tell potential applicants how to pay development-related fees and what forms of tender are accepted. Staff will need to document the internal review process and the township will need to streamline the development review process, allowing for permitted use site plans to have final review and approval lie with, with administrative staff or the planning commission and not the township board. Finally, in the area of boards and commissions, the township will need to outline the board and commission appointment process and make that available, information available on the website. It will need to finalize and distribute orientation packets to development-related boards and commissions. It will need to make existing bylaws for development-related boards and commissions available on the appropriate page of the township website or create bylaws where they do not exist. And the township will need to create a comprehensive training strategy for development-related boards and commissions. And now we're on to the red and missing RRC best practice items. These include a formalized development review feedback mechanism. In this example, Troy has used, Troy has created a survey and added it to, added the link to the bottom of their CFOs and permits. Now that everyone knows how to use QR codes, I would recommend if you go this route, putting a QR code with a link to the survey on there for easy access. Surveying your applicants in the development review process can help identify customer service problems early. The township will also need to create an economic development strategy, formalize economic development incentives, and create a marketing plan. It sounds like a lot, but the RRC program doesn't make you go it alone. We have guides that can help make these tasks easier and the RRC online library that features examples. So this slide here outlines the RRC certification process. Canton is at the decision point. The next step after this presentation is to ask you to pass a resolution to proceed, acknowledging the work that needs to be done and the value in doing it. From there, your staff, boards, and commissions will need to work to meet the RRC best practices. Once all of the RRC best practice expectations have been met, the township will become a certified redevelopment-ready community. The RRC program cannot and should not be accomplished by one person. To be successful in the RRC program and economic development, it will need to be a team sport. We encourage you to work with your local partners to meet RRC best practices and accomplish your goals. We're all stronger when we work together. Now that you're familiar with RRC, you're probably wondering what's the benefit? Well, aside from the intangible benefit that just going through a third-party review process brings, the RRC team has worked to build in many other benefits, such as technical assistance matching funds. RRC provides technical assistance matching funds to assist communities in implementing their vision and developing plans to aid in reaching RRC certified, RRC certification. As a community working toward RRC certified status, Canton is eligible for up to $30,000 in funding. The RRC team also provides tailored hands-on technical assistance support to communities to help your community achieve missing best practice criteria. By participating in the RRC program, Canton maintains an ongoing partnership with the MEDC, making it eligible and prioritized for our community development tools. We're here to help you implement your community vision. Finally, once Canton is a certified community, it will have access to the Redevelopment Services Team to help market priority redevelopment sites and to help your property owners see what their buildings and properties are capable of. But first, you have to have implemented your vision through zoning and clear development review processes and incentives because we don't want projects we're investing in to die at the point of decision. To elaborate a little more, the Redevelopment Services Team offers pre-development assistance funding, site marketing assistance, site showcase events, design-build scenarios, and more. The Redevelopment Services Team will help your community meet RRC best practice six, identifying sites that will pair well with community development incentives, and then will help you package and promote those sites. While Canton may have some work to do, I promise that you're in good shape. You have excellent city leadership and staff that is ready to put in the work to get you there, with your help, of course. I'm here to support you on this journey every step of the way and to connect Canton to resources to accomplish this, its goal. If you'd like to learn more about the MEDC's programs and tools, please visit our website. Information about the RRC program and community development can be found at myplace.org. And I'd like to invite you to take our RRC e-learning tool for a deeper dive into the program, or take our next session of RRC Virtual Academy, which will start in January 22. If you want to reach out to me to learn more, my email is kinge5@michigan.org, or my phone number is 517-249-0827. Thank you so much for giving me this time to speak with you today. I look forward to continuing our partnership with Canton and helping you reach your economic development goals, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks Elizabeth. I just want to let the board know that I did forward this presentation on to you while she was speaking, so you do have a copy of that presentation. And I just, just one quick thing about the program, and I know, I don't know if Patrick has anything he wants to say, but this does tie in very closely with your board goals in regards to the economic development and the marketing plan, and then also just setting ourselves up for when we do eventually get built out and are ready for redevelopment. So that's all I really had to say. And the resolution is actually later on in the agenda today for approval.
Anyone on the board, questions? So I have one. So where it talks about, Jade, you can answer this or Patrick, it talks about opportunities for improvement, and some of them were along the lines of, inside the planning area. Is this, are there, are we, is that some of our goals to meet that or are some that we don't think we are going to do? Or there was a slide on opportunities for improvement?
Are you talking about the economic development and the marketing plan? Are you talking about the economic development and the marketing plan? The reds or the yellow?
The yellow.
You want to speak to that, Patrick? And I guess regardless of where the progress options are or the opportunities that we do have, I think it's important to note too, and I think it's stated in the baseline report that you all have, that it's not a concrete, there's nothing black and white that we have to do as a township to satisfy this. It's all about the intent of the program and then making sure we're following the program and addressing something. So if it says that there's something we can work on, it doesn't mean that it has to be cookie cutter compared to what our RRC program is recommending or another community. It can be very customized to Canton as long as we're meeting those expectations.
Right. I apologize. You're right, making good progress on that slide. Slide fifteen.
Yes.
Thank you. And as Jade mentioned, there's not one particular way that we have to do any objective, but there's hundreds of communities that are in the program that will be doing it different. So it'll be an opportunity for us to learn from other communities, find other best practices that are out there, and find the right one for Canton Township. We've evaluated every one of the criteria where improvement is needed, and it is attainable to meet the objective and do so in a way that we'll want it done for our community. So by looking at all the criteria, they're all attainable.
Then the ones that are opportunities for improvement, those like the economic development strategy, that comes out of what you're doing, all the data you're collecting, correct?
From a lot of it, it is. Some of the background data that we're collecting, both for the redevelopment-ready communities and in advance of doing the kickoff for the upcoming master plan process, we are collecting a lot of economic development, economic-related data that will be used in that process as well.
Right, that's a good plan. Anyone else? Tanya?
So after the board, you know, we have an RBA today for, you know, going forward with this, and after that happens, should things be happening together, like in parallel? Are you going for, you know, doing your own research? And at the same time, I think there's a thing that you need to do for doing a presentation to the community. I think there was something, as I read through the RBA, there was one, one of the things was, you know, you have to develop a website, and then there is a presentation. So are all these happening in parallel? What is the next step? I was just curious about it.
Sure. Some of the items that are part of the criteria are already underway. There are some of the items where the Planning Division staff have drafted, for example, Planning Commissioner orientation packets, and those are items that we continue to work on, things that we can do at the administrative level just to improve the operations of the Planning Division itself. And so some of those are just underway underneath the surface because they're not necessarily documents that'll go through the Planning Commission review or the board review. So we're working on those to try to attain those best practices. For something like the master plan, that will take time in terms of doing the kickoff and achieving all the objectives that we want to during the master plan process. So the master plan will take quite a bit of time, and I think updating the zoning ordinance will also take time. In some cases, whether it's the zoning ordinance or the public participation plan, we will need to go through some of the public participation of the master plan first to get a sense of the community's and the township's vision and how we want to see public participation in the future, and some of those elements of zoning that we want to see in the future before we go ahead with zoning amendments. So a lot of those we'll be doing concurrently.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So are we considered an RRC evaluation in progress community or an evaluation completed community now?
Your evaluation has been completed, so you're engaged and you're working towards certification.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick comparison, that a lot of our departments and divisions are going through certifications or accreditations, and this is really kind of a public way of being certified with the MEDC because it involves planning and zoning economic development. It's a very public, forward-facing process, so it has a little bit different approach where you have to pass a resolution and say that the township actually wants to be engaged with us, where a lot of the other accreditations are done behind the scenes and they're all operational. This is very forward-facing because this is all about future development and development of the community.
Thank you. I agree, this is a good certification to have. As you can see, all the other communities that have it on slide, slide five, I think we're in good company.
So far, if I could read this correctly, there's only one community in Wayne County that's actually certified. Is that correct, Elizabeth? That's Dearborn?
Yeah, yeah, I can't think of any others. So if you move fast, you can be the second.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Elizabeth.
Thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approving budget purchase of water meters and associated meter accessories. C2, consider approval of payment of the annual software license fees to Kerry Works for the on-base document management systems. Item C3, consider an increase of $25,700 to the PO number listed to Fishbeck for the 2021 Water Main Capital Improvement Project.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segger. Support by Trustee Berninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Consent calendar passes. Moving on to the general calendar. Item G1, consider first reading of the amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Alexandra and Ariana L.L. Series Zoning.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following. I move to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendment to Appendix A, zoning the Code of Ordinances, the Charter Township of Canton as provided in the attached ordinance which rezones the south one-half of the vacated alley adjacent to Lot 404 and the north thirty feet of Lot 404 McIntyre Manor subdivision at 441254 Robe. Subject text parcel listed from OSP, off-street parking and central business district CBD overlay to C2, community commercial and central business district CBD overlay as shown in the attached zoning match, and to consider for a second read on November 9, 2021.
Support.
Thank you. Motion made by Clerk Segger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The property owner proposes to rezone a portion of the parcel at 44125 Ford Road from OSP, which is off-street parking and central business district overlay, to C2, community commercial and CBD overlay. The parcel is located on the south side of Ford Road and the east side of Brookline Road, and the subject property proposed rezoning is an area of approximately forty feet by 127.5 feet, which includes the southern ten feet of the building and the area located thirty feet south of this building. The applicant proposes to retain the OSP zoning on the remainder of the parcel to the south, which consists of the driveway, parking area, and landscaping. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Any board discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is G2, consider authorization to implement recommendations necessary to receive redevelopment-ready communities certification from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which we just had a presentation on.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, authorization to implement recommendations necessary to receive redevelopment-ready communities certification for the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Whereas Charter Township of Canton is engaged in the MEDC Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, including entering into a memorandum of understanding with the MEDC and undergoing an evaluation of the township's redevelopment practices as reported in the Redevelopment Ready Communities baseline report dated October 2021. Whereas MEDC has developed a program for certifying redevelopment-ready communities and the Charter Township of Canton desires to achieve that certification by implementing best practices and recommended strategies for redevelopment. Whereas the Charter Township of Canton is currently updating its master plan and will utilize the recommendations of technical assistance provided by the MEDC to ensure that redevelopment readiness is appropriately addressed in the document, whereas the program includes evaluating the strong partnerships with township boards and commissions related to development, including the Township Board Trustees, Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Downtown Development Authority. Whereas the review of the Redevelopment Ready Communities baseline report, the Charter Township of Canton is willing to complete the tasks outlined, which will involve interaction with the aforementioned township commissions and boards, and whereas the baseline report requires certain recommendations to be completed for the township to attain redevelopment-ready communities certification, now therefore be it resolved. The Board Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby authorize the Charter Township of Canton to implement the recommendations made by the MEDC that are necessary to receive redevelopment-ready communities certification from the MEDC.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segger, support by Trustee Berninski. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, established the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program as a voluntary technical assistance initiative to help communities shape their future by building a foundation of planning, zoning, sustainability, and economic development best practices and integrating them into everyday functions. Communities who engage in the RRC process commit to improving the development readiness by agreeing to undergo a rigorous assessment and working locally to integrate the best practices. There's no cost to participate in the RRC program, and then MEDC offers staff support, grant opportunities, and networking opportunities throughout the certification process. At its meeting on June 8, 2021, the Charter Township of Canton Board of Trustees adopted a resolution to authorize the township's initial participation in the RRC program. Since that time, township staff and MEDC staff have collaborated to identify strengths, weaknesses, and gaps in the township's redevelopment processes that may deter opportunities for sustainability and investment in the future. At the conclusion of this evaluation, the MEDC prepared a baseline report for the township's review. The next step in the RRC certification process is for the township to adopt a resolution to authorize the implementation of recommendations necessary to receive certification. Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
No.
All right, thank you. Any board members, discussion? Board discussion? Nope. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3, consider authorization of a purchase order to Fishbeck Incorporated for professional engineering services for the design of the major roads projects proposed for 2022 and 2023.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order contract for the design of the 2022 and 2023 major road improvement projects to Fishbeck Incorporated in the amount of $294,360.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segger, support by Treasurer Slavens. As proposed and proposed, as proposed and proposed in the Five-Year Roads Plan, Engineering Services has completed scoping and field reviews of the proposed 2022 and 2023 village major roads projects, including Canton Center, Ford to Warren, Warren Road, Lily to Hagerty, Lily, US 12 to Palmer, and Lots, US 12 to Palmer. The proposal also includes a small repair at Cherry Hill-Canton Center intersection that could not be completed in the past two years due to the Wayne County project. Engineering design will now move to detailed design permitting and preparation of construction documents. Fishbeck Incorporated was retained in 2018 in a competitive bidding process to handle design and construction engineering for the major road projects, and has submitted a proposal to complete these final designs. Director Smith, want to add anything?
Just that these road projects were presented with the Five-Year Roads Program a few months ago, and this is just the follow-up to get the design started so we can get the ground running in the spring of '22.
Thank you. Any board discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Great. Item G, let's see, G4. Consider award of CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Contracts.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the housing, the two housing rehabilitation contracts to J CJ Contracting Incorporated listed below totaling $50,000, and additionally to refund $1,123 of permit fees once the work has been completed using CDBG dollars.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segger, support by Trustee Ganguly. Under Canton's Affordable Housing Program, federal dollars are used to pay for major and minor repairs to owner-occupied, single-family homes in Canton. The participating families must meet HUD income requirements. Formal bid procedures were followed, and the public bid opening was held on September 2, 2021 for the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program. Unfortunately, no bids were received due to the pandemic and a lack of construction labor force. The Finance and Budget Department reached out to numerous contractors, and only one company returned a quote. We are requesting to approve contracts for multiple HUD/CDBG-funded home rehabilitation projects that exceed the $10,000 purchasing threshold. Director Trumbull, do you want to add anything?
No, I'd be happy to answer any questions, though.
Okay. Any board questions? Discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider authorization to purchase new cardio equipment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve two purchase orders for the following, for the attached cardiovascular equipment purchases at the Summit on the Park, and to approve the budget transfer in the amount of $1,015 from the account number listed, program activity supplies to the account number listed for capital outlay machinery and equipment.
Motion made by Clerk Segger, support by Treasurer Slavens. Thank you. An invitation to bid was solicited in September 2021 for new cardio equipment for the Summit on the Park Fitness Center. From this solicitation, the three fitness equipment providers submitted bids for all or some of the specific equipment requested, Direct Fitness Solutions, All Pro Fitness Things, and Strength Eo Fitness. Canton Leisure Services is recommending the approval of two purchase orders for eight new cardiovascular pieces of equipment, Direct Fitness Solutions in the amount of $43,620, and Strength Eo Fitness in the amount of $5,395, for a total amount of $49,015. Director Hoenberger, do you want to add anything?
Vote Director Smith. No.
Okay. Any board discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G6, this is the add-on one. Consider authorization of permit for private fireworks display at the Hamlet to celebrate DiVale.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a fireworks display permit to the Hamlet Association for the DiVale celebration at 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, November 6, located between Federal and Proctor west of Steeple Chase.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. This is a community event to celebrate DiVale on November 6 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Fifty to seventy-five families are anticipated to attend. The plan is to provide boxed meals to participating families and set off fireworks around dusk. The fireworks will be set off by volunteers in the designated area. The launch site will be on a vacant parcel of property, Area A on the map as shown as attached, adjacent Ridge Road and the Federal Boulevard. The application has been reviewed by the fire marshal, who confirms compliance with all state and local requirements for the approval of this permit request. Director Stockline, do you want to add anything? Any board discussion?
Am I, Madam Supervisor, am I correct that they're going to be doing the fireworks celebration at 5:00 p.m.? That's what the motion said?
It was basically at dawn, yeah, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. is, I mean, dusk, I'm sorry, is what the application said.
Sorry, what?
Let's see, I think the permit is attached. It says in the permit, 5:00, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Saw 5:00 in the permit.
That's what type the event is, from 5:00 to 8:00, but the fireworks will be, so this is strictly for the fireworks.
Okay. There's no time written for the fireworks, is there?
It says at dusk on the It says at dusk on the permit.
That's what I wanted to know.
Is our motion correct, then?
I'm going to go with the fire chief over here on the accuracy of the permit. I just had some concern over the visibility of the fireworks if I were, based on my literal reading of what the motion was, but I'm comfortable that we've all read and seen the permit, so that's okay. Just want to clarify.
Okay.
Just to be clear, these are just consumer fireworks. The reason that we're here is just because the ordinance states that because it's not in one of those holidays, that we have to get your permission.
Anyone else? Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. On the next item on the agenda is a public comment again. Any, do we? That was six. Right. That was G6.
Should I want to send this attachment twice today?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect.
So, do we have any other, do we have any online public comment? Although I know we had some trouble before.
Let's take a look. We only have two participants. One is me. One is Canton Leisure Services. Oh. All right.
Any public comment online? Online, please raise your hand. Press *67. Okay. All right. Mr. Miller, you said you had a public comment?
Couple more short things we addressed here in the past. A brownfield at Morton Tealer, Michigan Avenue. Township owns it. You can't build on it. I'd like to know why you bought it. Michigan law says that once it's a brownfield or a chemical dump, you can't, you can't do anything with it. Next thing is recycling. We're on a recycling campaign here, evidently. The gun range over there, last time I, a few years ago, they had five tons of lead taken out of it. I'd like to know when that can be addressed again for lead contamination. Want to recycle. Next thing is offense ordinance. I'd like to know, you have womanized or pressurized wood. It takes the weather, that's what it's meant for. According to the ordinance, all wood structures have to be painted. So when you paint that, it doesn't hold the paint. It comes off. You're painting it every year. Not every three or four, five years, you're painting it every year. I'd like to know what can be done to address that issue. Once. And the last issue also is pouring this concrete around the township, these contractors. I'd like to know, even if there's a state law or ordinance or a building ordinance on it, why they can't cover that when it looks like rain and half visqueen out there and cover it? Because the rain beats the aggregate, which is the glue out of the cement, and it weakens the cement. And I'd like to know if there's been a slump test made on that when they're doing the job, to know the strength of the concrete.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Public comment? No other public comment? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a new area for us. It's called Board Comment. So we're going to go one by one and see if anyone wants to add anything or comment on anything you heard on public comment or agenda items. Start down, Tanya Ganguly, Trustee Ganguly.
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Foster?
I don't have anything either.
Okay, Clerk Seegerst.
Madam Supervisor, I've never turned down an opportunity to talk in my entire years of existence. I won't today. Great meeting. Lot of exciting information. Thank you Municipal Services Director for giving us all that lovely information. And, you know, public comment has been an interesting occurrence for two meetings in a row now where we appear to be having a lot of discussion about issues that aren't really germane to the official township business that we're kind of here to conduct. I understand it's very heated, and people feel very passionate. Things get said sometimes that individuals take issue with, and they want to correct the record. And now that it appears both sides have had an opportunity to speak, I would hope in the future we can have Canton Township public discussion revert back to comments like Mr. Miller's about concrete and brownfield and drainage and things like that. Canton does have a very beautiful, diverse community with a lot of people who live in it, who come from a great background. And we love to talk about that through our resolutions and our celebrations, through Leisure Services, where we educate each other on the unique diversity of our community. You know, we do a great effort to create a welcoming community. And I think that if we keep focusing on becoming a welcoming community and making space and room for everybody, we will all be better off. But if we try to use public comment as a place to bring about critiques of individuals or ideologies or organizations, that might lead to a less welcoming community and becoming a little bit more divisive. And so I would just, now that everyone's had an opportunity to speak, I hope that we can kind of let this issue rest, and we can move on to other business and, and support the community in that way. It has been very educational, though, up to this point. I've definitely spent some time on the internet, which is sometimes a very dangerous thing if you don't know how to use the internet correctly. But I've definitely educated myself in a number of ways, and I'm grateful for that. Other than that, things are going great in the Clerk's office. We've got an election coming up. Not we in Canton Township. And my office keeps getting calls. And what's interesting, because of the pandemic, sometimes we tend to have less sympathy and less compassion for other people. We oftentimes lead from an aggressive standpoint, where we feel like we have some self-righteous anger. And voters in Canton Township have been calling my office angry I did not send out a ballot for them. Canton Township does not have an election. There's nothing for anyone to vote on. And once we let them know that, they're nice and calm again. But one, I kind of want to ask the community, when you call and you're upset you don't get a ballot, maybe don't lead with the anger. Maybe take some time. You're calling a human being. Use some compassion. Be kind, be nice. Because the humility that comes once they realize there's nothing for them to vote on in a week, it's embarrassing for them. And that can be, I know I have had to find out by eating humble pie myself many times, that my confidence is almost always a precursor to having to eat crow. So being kind to people who work with the township is always a good thing to do, and being kind to each other in the community is fantastic. But, the reason I got on this tangent, and I apologize for where that went, my staff will be reporting, not all of them, obviously, but a substantial portion of my staff will be reporting to work at the Oakland County Absentee Ballot Counting Board to see what the largest absentee counting enterprise will look like, to document, research, take up best practices, and bring them back to Canton Township for future elections. And then I will, will be working that day in Lathrop Village to help, help them and to learn how they do elections there. We do have a board meeting that night, and I will be zooming into that board meeting, probably from my phone. I may be preoccupied, but I will be here for that meeting. That is all.
Thank you. Did you, were we going to discuss the comments?
Oh, you want to do that at this point?
Yeah.
If you all look at your email, I sent a fresh email because the physical policy that you were all provided was the oldest, was the older version of the policy, which is the procedure for the conduct of township board meetings. I know an individual spoke at public comment, asking, "When did the three-minute rule come into play?" And that was introduced in our procedure for the conduct of township board meetings in 2002. And that's evidenced by our existing policy, the procedure for the conduct of board meetings, which is called Operations Policy 7. It's one of our longest policies. It originated out of a series of bylaws from the 1980s, but then at some point, somebody realized townships don't have the legal ability to have bylaws because the Charter Township Act is our charter under law. And so they decided to create a policy, which is almost a mirroring of what the Michigan Municipal League and the Michigan Townships Association recommend for the conduct of board meetings. And the reason you have these rules, because it specifies what the agenda looks like, it specifies if you want to limit public comment, you have to do it through your rules, otherwise you're outside of compliance with the Attorney General's advice when it comes to the Open Meetings Act. Supervisor has a lot of power in conducting meetings, but some decisions have to be made through a policy or through a rulemaking procedure. Operations Policy Number 7, we can't vote on it tonight because if you look at the last page, it does indicate that there's a process for amending it. Amendments to these rules and procedures may be made after two weeks' notice and a two-thirds majority vote of the board. So if we wanted to act on this, we couldn't tonight, and we would need a two-thirds majority of the board. And I assume that's two-thirds majority of the board that is present at a meeting. In this policy, there was some discussion as we've been looking internally, the board of the Township Board, when we met earlier this year. We tasked the administration with reviewing our existing policies and procedures to try to increase and to prioritize employee morale. And so in that process, we found there was some information in this policy that was no longer pertinent, information that was covered by other policies, and some procedural adjustments that the Supervisor's Office would like to make. If you look at the one that I had sent you, I had to add back all of the virtual meeting material, which I attempted to do. That was done by Corporation Counsel, and so I was never given a Word document. Typically, policies are held by the Clerk's office. That one, because it was amended upon the recommendation of Corporation Counsel, I didn't have a copy of, in a Word document. So I had to kind of piece it back together, and I did the best I could during this meeting. The big adjustments are going to be, if you look under, on page 3, under subsection D, what you're going to see is some information there about regular meeting, regular study agendas. That is an outdated standard. Currently, the Supervisor's practice, Office practices, that information should be provided by departments and directors to their office by Tuesday. And so after a long conversation, because as you've now realized, I'm a stranger to short ones, it was recommended that we remove that section as unnecessary, that it didn't need to be in Board Rules and Recommendations. That was from Amy Hugheson. And then the board member information, nobody knew what non-agenda item materials were, and so we didn't understand that provision, and so we treated it as kind of a bygone from a former era, and that if items and material were going to be provided to Supervisor's Office, it would probably, we would want all items to kind of meet that Tuesday standard set by the Supervisor's Office. So this is really taking the board out of the internal process of how to construct the board packet. This is giving kind of the authority back to the Supervisor's Office to create their own procedure. And we felt comfortable with that, and it makes it more consistent with how we're currently operating. The other recommendations are in our order of business. Things like board comments would be added to the bottom. There would be changing the name Citizens Non-Agenda Item Comments, or Citizens Forum to just the term Public Comments. Putting that in, at, at the back of the meeting. I would recommend if we do that, that legislative updates from our delegation be treated as presentations at the beginning of the meeting.
What about, I thought that we were going to look, I mean, agenda items. So public comment on agenda items before you go into the public.
Oh, is that what we decided?
Because if someone wanted to comment on an agenda item at the beginning of the meeting versus doing it during the agenda item itself.
Oh, we've talked about two forums. See, thank you. Having these kids at home just makes them a brain scrambled sometimes. Thank you very much. So two public comments. So public comment in the beginning.
On agenda items.
On agenda items. So we call that public comment, agenda items. And then we would remove, and then we just call it additional public comment at the So then I would remove the scratch out of additional public comment. That sounds brilliant. And then, under A, we would eliminate the 30-minute provision for the Citizens Forum, and then continue eliminating things, that second sentence, because individuals would be able to speak on the agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, which is not the current practice. Is that what you're recommending?
Right. Yes.
Are there any questions about that?
No, I mean, that sounds good. That way, when the agenda comes up, any concerns the resident has on that agenda can be addressed.
Under subsection B, I, there's some Roberts Rules of Order concern I had with our procedure for removing an item from the consent calendar. A consent calendar by design ensures that 100% of the people on the body support every item that is on the consent calendar. But we had some sample language in here about how to remove an item that specifically required a second, which was a violation of a very basic principle of Roberts Rules of Order. And so I recommend completely removing the sample language, which I would be comfortable with if everybody else is. And so in that instance, you would just tell the Supervisor, "I don't want that item on the consent calendar," and it would immediately go to the general calendar, and it wouldn't require a second. And then, there are no other modifications. So there's just the kind of consent calendar cleanup, creating the two, the two forums, but moving the agenda item one to the, to the front.
Right.
Adding board comments, eliminating the 30-minute provision on Adding board comments, eliminating the 30-minute provision on any of the forums, keeping the three-minute provision in there and getting rid of the information about how to create it, the board packet. It does still keep the stuff that the board should receive the packet by five o'clock on Friday, which allows everybody the ability to review it the week prior. There's still that item in there that is unique to this body that I've never seen in any other body, that the clerk shall make all motions.
Oh.
And I'm comfortable with it. I like to play with my voice when I do it sometimes and make it a little fun and jazz it up every once in a while. I get pretty good at it. But I also, it's also a little bit bizarre because I've never seen that in any other legislative body before. If you're all comfortable with it, we can keep it. I believe it was added in 2008 or 2009. There were, was the election of three brand-new trustees at the time. Steven Snyderman, although he had been, served on the school board and he was very experienced. But Patrick Williams and John Anthony were all brand-new trustees that year. Oh, I stand corrected. Dr. Taj and Pat and John, I think. But there were a lot of new trustees and so to facilitate and expedite the speed of the meeting, Phil, who had just come from the legislature, asked that Terry make all motions because she was the most experienced on the board, having served since the mid-'90s. And so that was how the clerk got the responsibility to make all motions. You won't find that on the Plymouth City Commission. You won't find that on the Plymouth Township Board of Trustees. I don't think it was probably the case in Mylan where Jade came from. I don't know that it was that case in, well, I know it's not the case in Westland because the clerk doesn't vote in the city of Westland. But I don't know if anybody's ever experienced that. I know there's probably not, there's no provision on the school board that one person make the motion. Because technically, under Roberts Rules of Order, making a motion is indicating support for a motion. And I'm sure you've seen at public comments where I'll make a zoning motion and a resident, much like the residents who called my office recently with their zeal about not getting their ballot, will show up and say, how could this clerk make this motion in support of this horrible development? To which I'm almost defenseless because the rules oblige me to make every single motion. It's an awkward position. I can educate people on it. I'm comfortable keeping it. It's just unique to Canton Township and its history, I think, is rooted in that transition from 2008.
So does anyone have any thoughts on?
All of it.
All of it or making motions? You know, rotating it around or summer?
I'll just say, I think a lot of the changes make sense and it'll improve the flow of the meeting. I don't have an issue with one person making the motions. It seems like it would be easier for the meeting and if the clerk is not able to attend, we just appoint a temporary clerk.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I can see both sides. I like the changes. I personally, as a human being, I would like Michael to have the option to not have to make the motions, simply because of, you know, that might be construed as showing support. On the other hand, I know as a former president of the school board that we did not have that provision and sometimes the flow of the meeting was interrupted because we were waiting for someone to make a motion. So I can see, I can see both sides. I'm comfortable with whatever Michael wishes.
It's a brilliant parliamentary procedural motion because if an item requires a mover and a second to be considered, it ensures that everything the supervisor brings before the body will be considered. So it's definitely a smart maneuver. I've seen motions on school board die from lack of a second because they were absurd motions. When I was on the library board, somebody wanted them to, when there was still a Java Joe's, they wanted someone, they wanted to sell alcohol there and that issue didn't get a second, for good reason.
Though I think also sometimes people are hesitant because they're not quite sure how to make a motion. We actually have our motions written out for us so that that is, that concern, I think, is somewhat removed for us. On school board, we did not have that and so I think sometimes people were like, wait, you know, do I have to read out the action item number? Do I have to read out, you know, what part of it do I need to read out?
You're okay with it.
I mean, keep things going with regard to the clerk reading every motion.
It's a lot of work, though.
I'm going to be like Ernie Harwell by the time this is done. I'm going to be, I'm going to have it down. Okay.
Well, is it working with the virtual and you doing that?
It was uniquely challenging tonight because I had to edit a document and merge a document from a PDF to a Word document while trying to switch from my agenda where I take notes to my board packet where I read the motions and then double-check to make sure that there wasn't public comment on the Zoom. And typically, it's okay because the Zoom is done on my computer, but with the Zoom being done up there on that big screen, it definitely got to the point where it's like, you know, the person to my right is basically just reading a page and I'm trying to do seven things at once. It can be a little bit much, but I'm a good multitasker. I'm uniquely qualified in many ways. I'm not good at much, but doing many things at the same time, I'm pretty decent at, clearly not doing it well.
So if you do this and let's say you are caught up in the virtual part of it, can you say, can someone read the motion for me? I mean, or can we not because we?
I could. Typically, what I'll do is I'll just kind of continue, I'll keep doing what I'm doing and force everybody to kind of sit there in awkward silence for a brief period, which probably feels longer because we're on a stage. But yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
We'll keep doing it. I just, you know, if at any point in time someone's like, hey, I want to start making motions, you know, because we have to suspend a lot of parliamentary rules to do this. One, the maker of a motion can't speak against their own motion. That's not allowed, but I am allowed because it's amended. It's just a lot of interesting parts, but anyway, I'm done.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Get me on my stuff like I can be sometimes.
That's good. We have some good changes. Thank you. Treasurer Slavens, do you have anything for board?
I will be brief because it is getting late, but I do want to reiterate what the clerk did say about Canton is a welcoming community. We want to continue it to be a welcoming community. So I missed the last meeting, but this meeting, we, you know, we had a lot of residents speaking and it's all wonderful, but, you know, public comments is for local comments and we appreciate things, you know, what's been said, but we need to get back to the township business and the township's concerns. And we do, we want to make sure that Canton continues to be a welcoming committee, a community for everybody. And then I also wanted to bring out, up the kindness too. COVID has brought some, has kind of been difficult on people and often we, we have some angry phone calls or angry residents coming in, but it's really important to remember to be kind. Our employees are working really hard and doing their best for our residents. So kindness, please, everybody, even, you know, all of us, remember to be kind to one another. So that's my spiel. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Borninski?
So I agree with Treasurer Slavens' comments and especially about Canton being a welcoming community. Hoping this doesn't stir things up again, but I wanted to make my fellow board members aware that yesterday I found in my junk email box a, an email from someone who spoke tonight and another person. And I, I don't know how often everyone else checks their junk email, but I did bring it to your attention, Madam Supervisor, so that the request that was made in the email will be met. But I just wanted to remind board members that, you know, we might need to check our junk folders a little more often than we have been because I, I was very upset when I saw that I had an email from October 17th that, you know, had not been responded to and I'm not sure if anyone else received it. Emery, you said you couldn't find it.
Right.
So I can forward it also, but just want to make you aware and also apologize that that email was in our junk folders, apparently, at least in mine. And so it was not responded to in a timely fashion.
Thank you for that. I just checked and it was in mine, so thank you.
And I didn't see it.
Yeah, it was in my junk folder too. And one of the speakers spoke today.
Yes, we did reply.
Oh, because it was sent from an info?
Yes.
That's, okay. So the algorithm identified that it was someone else?
Yeah, for you.
I think it, Michael, I think for your email, they did like clerk?
Clerk.
Canton clerk at Canton, am I? And so it says Kristen Weisschop?
Correct.
So.
Yes. My email is not on the township website.
Probably in her junk folder.
In her junk folder. I'll let her know.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it. I'm just, you know, again, sorry that that was not found, you know, until, until now, basically.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Well, I do also want to say, you know, I appreciate the comments today and I, I know there are a lot of hurt feelings on both sides and I think as the other trustees have said, we are a welcoming community and we do work hard to keep our community strong together and safe together and that's why we have a lot of the cultural events like we had last Friday with the DiVale and we even have, we celebrate Ramadan in the park. We have holiday tree lighting in December. So we do appreciate all of our cultures and we want to continue to celebrate them. I did hear a comment tonight where somebody said they were concerned with their safety. So if that's the case, at any time anyone is concerned with their safety, please call our public safety department. You know, if you, if you feel scared for your safety, please do not hesitate to do that at all. I also like to jump on the be kind to our employees. As I've heard even over at the summit, we've had to have some suspensions because people are, their tempers are a little bit shorter now, it seemed since COVID. So be kind to our employees. They're there to help you and they're, they're doing everything they can to work with you. So please be kind to our employees. Also, as I said, we had our DiVale. We have some Halloween happenings going on and a turkey trot coming up, so that's something to look forward to. We had our trunk or treats last week. We had, I think, approximately 250 vehicles with about four or five kids in each, so we had a long night from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. handing out candy. So that was a lot of fun. Does anyone on the staff want to comment on anything? Anything happening or no? Okay. All right, it is a late night. I appreciate it. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Have a great night.